Okay, I think I saw those. This like it's a remote and it's got red on the copper of the up here, left hand corner. Alright, hit. View Sonic? Okay, I'm hitting and I'm not getting...
Yeah, how are you sir? Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm in the loft.
Well, hey, how you doing? How are you? Oh, I'm here. How's it going? Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Yeah, I, I planned it, you know, I'd say... That is true. Okay, alright, well, that's pretty good. Come on, let me see the background. Yeah. I got it. I don't know why I'm sitting in the middle. Oh. Yeah. Uh, okay. That time I did, it said... I'm not sure if that's married. It says no signal. Looks like it's in reverse now. Okay, got it. Uh, I'm only seeing one on. It's a no signal. Um...
It's gonna be a interesting one.
I s- I see.
That's gonna be an interesting one. So, those guys...
Yeah, it's like... Sure. Well, right, when I'm...
For sure.
Now, it says no signal. It's like, uh, what's that thing? Yeah, look nice. Um, okay, so it looks like they're on, so...
I've got papers in here, if you want some papers.
I think, uh, we're all set in. We don't have any leaves to look at or...
Okay, um, so I'm back up at the loft, you said a power strip. Where's...
I need to... It was just a little rough.
Oh, is it, does it have like, look like a joystick thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh...
If you want to use the Facebook Live or the YouTube, you'll have to find it.
Now, is it the power I previously turned on, or you mean the, if I'm facing the stage, is it the far right hand side? Yeah, I gotcha. Okay, I'm seeing a lot of knobs on that. Oh, okay. Okay, I think this is in, it says power on. Okay. Yeah, it's, there's a number that lights out, but it says power. Um... And it looks like it's a little brighter on the screen, but I'm not sure. Uh-huh. Yeah, it's not, yeah, I don't see, unless if I log in, let's see if it does it after I log in. Yeah, it's, it's not, it just says no signal up the top. The, the, the projectors are on, but there's no... It's, the connection isn't there, they're in the... I mean, I'm in a... Okay. Yeah, I mean, it reaches back here. Yeah, it's, it's just not reading my, my laptop, I think. Let's try, let me try one more thing, there's a second. Let's try, make sure, maybe this, this looks familiar to me. And I think this is what I used last time, but it's not, it's like a remote. The remote HDMI, no. No, it's not. Yeah, so it's, it's not projecting onto this, that's the issue. Uh, I think it's supposed to start at five thirty. Um... Let's see. There's one here on the ground, I don't know if that's... Uh, the smaller issue is at five thirty, though thankfully, the one we really need it for is... Is the layer. Um... Yeah, that would be awesome if you could, 'cause it, it looks like we're having a problem with, now, it could be... I'm not seeing that other HDMI. Um, I'm only seeing the one that we tried, and like I said, the screens, the projector screens are on. Mm-hmm. Hmm. Yeah, it, it looks like the problem is the, the projector monitors are, are on, but it is not connecting to my laptop. Okay. Alright, yeah, that would be great, thank you. Alright, bye. Well, go for it, so, the problem is, is that this is supposed to, he's gonna have somebody come out, but he said there was some kind of church youth group here and he scared something happened to it. Um, but, the projectors are on, but it is not connect, when I put here, what he, he sent me through, this is supposed to... Light up, when I just did that, it's supposed to show, but that is not happening.
Okay. Is there a remote for those?
Yeah, and those have been turned on, um, because it shows, but it says no signal. Um, and that is the remote, but you can't do it from here, you have to turn it on and off from down there, because it doesn't reach. That's why I went back down and turned it on and off.
Okay, so, is this the other one?
Uh, I think they both, they're the same and they have the same signal. So, yeah, go for it. Do you think it maybe didn't to- totally turn on, or there's a, it could be a source mode that's not...
Yeah, I think it's in a different source.
Yeah, okay, that could be it, that makes sense. Did you see an HDMI option? Huh? Well, it's still not doing the screen, though, but... I've, I've got it plugged in.
So, that's searching, so at least you know I'm talking to you now. This is the one that you're supposed to be using?
Yes, that's what they even instructed me on. There's one that's a remote, but that one's not.
Not it? Um, did you hear the... They tried to get anything here?
No. Yeah, I know, I know what you're getting at, though, it might be...
There's a function. I do presentations all the time, also.
Um...
It's like a function. There's something I turned on up here. Is he coming? Coming to help? Yeah, so, I have figured out the... This, but supposedly this is the HDMI. I think something's not connected. Because then, my other thought was, we get to plug it into this HDMI, but I don't know...
Well, let's follow this back, we'll see where it goes.
You guys having trouble?
Trying to get figure out, I'm gonna have to...
I'll see what I can do. I'm a little familiar with it. It's about once a year.
Okay, is it that HDMI, good sir? If it's that, I'm so hurt.
And then, yes, HDMI. Let's listen to the reflection.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, use a microphone, will you need a microphone?
Do you need a microphone? Yes! No!
Did it come up for a second?
For a hot second.
Okay, well, that's probably just fine.
Right?
Why didn't it? And did you already select one?
No, so like, I tried selecting duplicate, mine's touching. So, I tried selecting duplicate, and it went duplicate, and now it's...
Did it turn off?
Yeah.
How many, just one microphone?
Yes.
I don't, is it, um, if you extend it, it's just like another screen. But duplicates, you guys use it sort of a lot.
Well, I think that, it doesn't do anything else.
Then, yeah, once you...
Hey, Audi? Can you take the remote?
Hey, uh, you guys don't have the power button? Did there weren't?
Power. Point it up there. Yeah, you gotta point it up to the...
Well, that doesn't matter, just for both?
No, it doesn't matter.
I guess you have it here. Yeah, it's a flip, a flip, that one. And then there's... Uh, there's not, it's turned off, we got, we got something for a second, it turned off.
Is there a light up there?
I don't. It would be blue, I think. Is it turning blue?
It's flashing blue.
Flashing blue? Let's closer.
There's no trick for those projectors, right?
Check one, two.
It's gonna mute.
Alright, uh, it's good on...
There's some, there's some... Now, yeah. Yeah, it's all a loop, it comes down. Yeah, I think I'm trying to... Yeah, probably.
So, how do we call this? Yeah, so we have this lit.
Yeah. One of us, that's working. But, one of them's not, so it's definitely... Not just... Got it. Yeah. Well, that were about five seconds. Plus, you can't be having it turn on one, two, break your bones. This, yeah, I actually am pretty fucking... Okay. Yeah, it is, I'm gonna make sure. See, you kinda gotta... I guess not. Make sure these are...
There we go, maybe. Let's see. Did I remember the display settings, I'm not quite familiar with one of those. Should just... Yeah. Stretch the cord, you shut up, I'm gonna follow this.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right. Alright, so, now we can check out this. And so... What do you need?
What did I say, power point or something?
So, yeah, I had this on, but was, what was the sample?
This, this was not on, and this was not plugged in. This had it plugged.
Yeah, he didn't mention that on the...
He probably didn't know it was not plugged in.
Okay, that would be the biggest. Um. We did last time and I would assume that that is somewhere here. That would be the next. Issue apparently.
Ben? Got it figured out? Ben, where are you from? I mean, obviously, Hocking Hills. Okay. Do you know Micah Moore? Ben Moore?
Yeah.
So I married his brother, Mike.
Oh, really? Okay. As long as Ben plays soccer.
Yep.
Yeah.
His mom's right down here somewhere. Early here.
Bond, right?
Ah, for me? Well, she's lost a lot. Yeah, she's great now.
I think I remember them being.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Most of their hospitals.
Oh, yeah. So those are my in-laws. Think about it.
That looks familiar.
Like the flicker.
Wow, it took a dream to figure this out.
Oh.
There you go.
You know Ben's when we got next to it?
That's exciting.
We're trying to figure out whether.
Trying to get a job on here or like she's a family or whatever.
Kind of. They want, uh, not a lot. Family and boys around here.
Thanks.
Rebecca, do you remember Finn? Played soccer with us, Finn. Right there.
So we'll see if that. It may be that's not for me. Uh-oh. It's not. It looks like it's. Well, it looks like there's a, yeah, the, it's, it's, it's higher than that. Did that guy, did that dude?
Actually, you know what? Thanks for telling me.
Yeah, see, look, it looks like there's a, you can see that there's something covering the top right there. It's higher.
Alright, babe. Almost there.
That doesn't go, maybe what we could do is with Scott. Because they're speaking. He'd probably be happy.
Well, and also, so here's my other team. I can run my car real quick. I have my presentation. And my presentation is not this.
Oh, it works with any?
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it. I'd appreciate it. Yeah, um. We just have to deal with the alt center. I, I, I'm not sure why. There's, there's probably. Uh, the projector is probably.
Yeah, I think it is.
And that, and that, yeah, I mean, you have to get a ladder. Alright.
Do you know how to put the thing on the full screen?
What is it?
When you do it, uh, do you know how to put it on like the full screen?
I don't wanna knock this over. It would be not good.
I don't mess it up.
That's probably share. Or export or something.
Don't worry about it.
Yes. Okay. Freaked about that. People were like talking down there.
Babe, bear, by the way.
Babe, Finn.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is 100% why you say you don't get in there for this stuff.
I think that is the problem is. This has been, been going on and off for me. And this. I don't have another outlet that's a USB outlet. It's the USB outlet that's the problem. I could, yeah, let's plug in, you know, that goes over here. I think that, I think it's the bad USB outlet is the problem.
We have to see someone can just stay up here and just do it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna get Scott to see.
I will.
Oh, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, I think it's. Yeah, that was it.
Yeah.
It's been going on, it's been intermittent, but you know, right now.
There you go.
Alright, I think we are good.
I'm playing. Totally reaching.
Alright.
Yeah, I was gonna see, we were waiting on it.
Yeah, it'd be good, well, sheriff's, I do that.
We're about, about to get started here, somebody, uh, uh, needs to get a seat. We welcome you to, uh, to our meeting here this evening. First want to thank the, uh, uh, folks here at, uh, the Hocking Hills Retreat Center for hosting this building and doing a very, uh, gracious thing by letting us use this beautiful facility. We've been here before and it, uh, it's, it's great to be able to take advantage of it. So thanks to Rodney Coon, we want to thank, uh, all of our technical folks that, that came out to get us going here. So we're gonna get started here. We're gonna work through the, the day, I'm just gonna make a few quick opening statements, um. I promise to keep it brief. I know I'm not good at that, but, um. Wanted, wanted to just say that, uh, uh, we started this process, uh, back some time ago. Began, uh, in February 2023. We looked at, uh, what we wanted to do as accounting. We wanted to address what we saw were needs occurring as far as the rate of growth. And, uh, we sat down and under the Higher Vice Code Section, uh, 30304, the commission that's appointed is only commission. Uh, that's only commission is, um, involves five appointments, two, two of those for total of seven. Are there, in the case of, uh, uh, one of the five can't, can't be there to, to vote or, uh, break a tie. The, uh, once, once the, uh, once the funding was secured, uh, the commission, uh, wanted to set up a search for an adequate consultant. And so we interviewed consultants and actually did a live interview, uh, on Facebook, uh, as we have held all of our meetings live on Facebook since March of, uh, 2023. Through all those meetings, we, uh, we were able to pick a consultant that we felt would represent us well. A consultant that's worked in Ohio, a consultant that, uh, is, uh, has history with working in accounting of similar size of hours. A consultant that's not only educated in planning, but also has a law degree. And, uh, those things are all important, but probably the keystone to the whole, to the whole process was to make sure that we had someone that could understand that we wanted to start by listening and listening a lot. So we conducted a survey amongst the county that was, uh, that was available for about a year, uh, and asked for concerns, comments, things that people saw that, that were concerning to them. Um, at the same time, um, we had scheduled, um, some public meetings, starting with stakeholders meetings. Uh, those stakeholders included, uh, developers, engineers, surveyors, realtors, attorneys, township trustees, the village councils of Laurville and Murray City, uh, business owners, farmers, the Farm Bureau. And then we also included all the first responders, including fire, sheriff's office, EMS, um. We held separate stakeholder meetings for each one of those groups. And the last and important one was the, the, uh, the short-term rental ordinance group. But we met individually with those. Uh, the consultant had hired a subconsultant to come in and record all the comments that were made. And then we began holding general public meetings. We held those throughout the county. We started in Laurville, worked our way across the county, holding six of those, uh, all well attended, I felt, uh, and ended in, uh, in Murray City. At the end of all that, we gathered the results and came up with, uh, uh, responses to what we thought those concerns were. And that's what we're gonna present to you tonight. I'm not gonna say any more than that. I'd like to introduce down here at the end of the table, gentleman that's in my, that's in my office, uh, he is Scott Schrader, a longtime, uh, uh, resident, uh, all-time resident of Hocking County, him and his family. And Commissioner Michael Litten here that's with us. He's a member of the, uh, commission. And, uh, here's David DeBair with American Structure Point Heart Consultant. Turn it over to him.
So before we get started tonight, one thing that, um, that, uh, Commissioner Linton, uh, asked that I mentioned is that we have some people who, uh, are definitely coming at seven o'clock for the short-term rental ordinance portion of this. And I see some faces that I know are probably here for this short-term rental. And I see some faces that I know are probably here for this short-term rental ordinance. Um, so, we're gonna have to hold off a little bit on that. And when I say folks, I mean, uh, not only people from the county, but also short-term rental owners, correct? So, as Audi mentioned, there are more ordinances other than the short-term rental ordinance. So, we're gonna go through with those first. Um, and then at that point, we will take a break, uh, and wait until seven o'clock for everyone to, to get here for that portion of it. Uh, so, with that, um, like Audi mentioned, we're gonna talk, or I'm gonna talk tonight about kind of the reasoning behind, uh, the, the regulations or the thought process. You know, when we, we create a, an ordinance, of course, it, it says what the regulation is, right? But, um, it doesn't, when you're reading that text, it doesn't necessarily say the, the reasoning behind that. Uh, there were a few in the draft ordinances that did have that reasoning, but, um, we're gonna go through those, um, individually. But again, we're gonna wait for the short-term rental ordinance and I'm gonna go through the other ones, uh, right now. Uh, so, as Audi said, we went through this process and we identified, uh, it, it, I wanna stress what Audi said to begin with, which was that our, our role at first was very much to listen and to hear what, uh, were their concerns. And so, one of the things that we, uh, started with was, do, do we want to have zoning in the county? A true zoning. And so, what we, what we found through this process was that maybe there were other, less restrictive, uh, ways to get at the issues that we were hearing about. Um, so, the ordinances that you, you see and that we'll talk about tonight are intended to, uh, restrict what is needed to be restricted to, to obtain the goals that, and, and to achieve the, uh, the issues and problems that do exist, um, while trying to make sure that there's not an overregulation. That's the whole rationale and point behind it. So, with that, I'm gonna go through very briefly what those five ordinances are. Uh, obviously, the short-term rental permit, well, again, we'll talk about, more about that later. Uh, site standards, uh, that's one of the ones we'll talk about here in a minute. Impact fees, noise ordinance, and then finally, the special event permit. Now, we did, on the special event permit, make a recommendation to do that. And we did create a draft for that ordinance. Uh, but after the draft, uh, the Emergency Management Agency, they were working, uh, at the same time to create a draft. And so, they took our draft and kind of merged those together and are working, uh, through that process on their own. So, we've kind of held off on that and more or less given our report to them and they are moving forward with that. Um, is there anyone, did we say we have someone from EMS here tonight? Okay, so, the EMS person isn't here, if he's gonna be here, or he's not here now? He's coming for the short-term rental permit later? Uh, I, I will ask that he, uh, give an update on the process or the, uh, for that permit. Uh, but at this time, we'll, we'll move forward with the other ones. Uh, the site standards ordinance, uh, the, the reasoning, the true reason behind this is for neighborhood protection, to make sure that when a land use comes in, uh, whether it be a large commercial business, uh, there have been issues and concerns that neighbors have raised when that has occurred. Uh, and so, instead of prohibiting, uh, that land use, um, whether it be a gas station, or whether it be an industrial building, or whatever it may be. Uh, right now, the county doesn't have any true standards that go with that. So, there are things that can be adopted by saying, look, you, we can accept that you're going to build the building. However, there are requirements that go with that, which is, uh, the ones that you see below. A site plan, so that you understand where things are gonna be built. Uh, setbacks, lot coverage requirements, making sure there's not too much that's built on the property. Making sure that, um, it's not too close to the street. That's been a concern for some residents, for some existing buildings that we heard. Uh, that there be, uh, some landscaping, screening requirements. Again, that's not up front, but those are for the neighbors. Um, because these, these things, while a lot of people may desire them overall, it can be intrus- intrusive if you are the neighbor. And so, a lot we heard from some neighbors that had had this, uh, occur to them without any kind of, uh, you know, um, screening or landscaping. So, with that, we also had lighting requirements. That's been a concern that has been expressed to us through the surveys, that we've heard, uh, from, um, from number of residents when we've had sessions just like this, when we had a session before here, uh, concerns about that the lighting was, was very, very bright and it was intrusive to the neighboring property owners. Uh, so, we have some requirements as far as, uh, full cutoff lights. Uh, stormwater requirements, that's something that should be done by the state or is a state requirement. It, I believe it's being enforced now, so that is not an addition. But it does make reference to that. And then when I say site access, I mean, ingress egress, it means that, uh, the, the locations from the road where you are coming in and out, um, there are some rules about that so that they're not too close, or that they're not too close to an intersection, or that they cause a safety concern. There've been a few, uh, buildings that have been built in the county that, uh, the county office has received some feedback saying, well, I, I'm not sure if, you know, that people don't really feel safe because of where that access point is. So, that's where that comes from. Uh, I'm gonna move on to the impact fee now. Um, the impact fee is more or less, uh, a way to ensure, this only applies, and it's, it's, it's important to mention this, it only applies to new structures and it only applies when a building is putting, put on the water and, or a sewer. Um, so, that, or, well, for that, for the water and sewer infrastructure part. We have had questions before, which is, if I'm building a building, um, am I gonna still have to pay the tax even if I don't, um, hook up to the water and sewer in the new building? The answer to that is no, so, I wanna kind of clear that up. But, uh, it also applies to road improvements and making sure that, because of growth, one of the things that you're gonna hear from our police department, or from the sheriff's department, uh, from the fire departments, and from the emergency medical services departments tonight is that with growth, there's been a lot of strain on their resources. And so, I have to say that when we've done, uh, stakeholder meetings with those groups, I've been doing projects similar to this for about ten years. And I have to say, it's the most extreme stories that I've heard from that group. So, it is, it is not, it, it, it is not stretching the point to say that they are really at a breaking point. Because some of the things that they have to deal with is, is pretty extreme. Um, uh, yes, sir?
Okay, impact fee, yes, but what are they? You know, you don't, what are they?
Right.
If they're, if they're fifty dollars fine, if they're five hundred, or five thousand, or five, fifty thousand.
Right, so, yeah, so, right, and that's a very, that's a very valid point. Um, the intent of the ordinance is to connect it to the amount, um, that the growth will require. Now, we haven't said in the draft ordinance, the amount. The reason we haven't is we've learned that there are some significant state and federal laws on this issue. And we are gonna be working through with our, uh, auditor's office to make sure that we, uh, do that correctly. So, that's a very good question, and that's the reason we haven't had to figure it out for that. Um, the, the, the next ordinance is the, the noise ordinance. Um, this came up through the short-term rental process and my recommendation, uh, was that if it's an issue, um, you know, it should apply not just to short-term rental owners, but to, to all owners. Um, and so, the decision was made by the zoning commission, uh, to move forward with a draft ordinance on this that did not just apply, uh, to the short-term rentals ordinances, but across the board. The problem that has occurred is, is a lot of times, the sheriff's department gets a call, they come out and someone's complaining that there's a large amount of noise. There's no objective standard for this. Um, and so, there's, there's no, no way to say whether someone actually has been loud or has not been loud. It's caused a lot of con- uh, concernation about it. So, the idea here would be, um, again, that it, it would be an objective standard. In the draft ordinance, we do have a certain threshold for that. It's a threshold that, uh, has been used, uh, very repeatedly in other jurisdictions. Um, and so, um, uh, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, we, we, uh, we, we would, uh, ask that, that you do. But, again, the main thing I wanna mention is that it doesn't just apply to short-term rentals. It does apply, uh, throughout the board. Mm-hmm.
I want to be the other side.
Sure.
My wife is looking at this, and she's a, our neighbor, very nice people. He had a shooting during, like, what the week, I mean, a thousand shots. But according to some state board, he's really not allowed to do that.
Uh, in the, the short-term, well, right now, of course, this hasn't been enacted.
It's the noise.
But the noise, uh, I don't believe, there has been some discussion as to whether that would be an exception to the ordinance. Um, but as it's drafted today, uh, that, I believe, would be, uh, something that could be regulated.
Why would that fire be involved in this?
Uh, that's what I just said, it would be regulated. Yeah, so, I, I'm saying that it would be something that would, would be.
So, if I was to hold, I mean, let, my daughter and my younger age are fine, and we were playing, you say, reception, from like a set of ten.
Mm-hmm.
If it was above a certain level, how would you, how would you do that?
Uh, well, again, we've been looking at exceptions, um, and one of those is with the special event permit. If it is such, uh, if a large enough of a gathering, uh, then it might require a special event permit. And with that, it would be an exception to the noise ordinance. Um, but, um, yeah, you know, these are valid concerns. We have heard a lot about exceptions to the ordinance. Uh, and so, uh, this is a, a great, uh, venue to, to ask and bring up those concerns.
We have a wedding venue every weekend, and that's twenty-five minutes, we have weeks. Will I have to buy a permit, will they have to buy a permit every time they got a wedding?
So, as I said, we've done the draft ordinance on the special event, but with that has moved to the EMS department. So, I'm gonna have to refer to the EMS to give an answer. EMA, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to refer to the EMA, which will be coming later and they can answer that question.
David, I'm wrong about this, or is that what answers this question? Is it the, it's not where the noise is created, it's where the noise is heard. Right, so, Roger, I've been in your venue, you don't have any neighbors, so, I, I don't think you're gonna have any issues. It's where the neighbor would, would be bothered by the noise, right? Is that, that sounds right, right? So, I wanna clarify that from a shooting perspective, too.
That's a very good point. The, the noise is, is, uh, registered from a neighboring property line or from a, 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 a ride-away line, because that is the impact on the, on the other person. You have a very, very large property and it doesn't matter how many decibels or how loud it is, if it can't be heard, you know, from a neighboring property, then it's not a nuisance, it's not a problem for another person.
And if your neighbor wasn't complaining, if your neighbor wasn't complaining, that's not gonna be an issue, right?
If, if your neighbor's not calling to say, Roger's too loud over there, there's, nobody's gonna engage in that conversation, right?
No, there's no permit for this, there's, the, the only way it really would be enforced is if there are complaints. I can't see any other way that it would be.
I'm sorry, I mean, the, but, but not a guy that's gonna go out and buy a piece of property to build a wedding venue. What do you gotta do, ask all the neighbors if they're gonna complain if we have to do this? They'll say, absolutely.
That's what the district's got, you show them.
Yeah, I understand your concern, I don't know where the current draft is on that. Um, I would, uh, when the EMA gets here, that they may be able to update you more on that. Um, I had that in the ordinance, uh, yeah, sixty, sixty decibels, yes.
So, that means the line was, how would you say?
Uh, we looked at other ordinances for that and we looked at, uh, comparable communities and that's where we found that.
Or is there by entire top line, you would say a hundred and three decibels? How are we gonna finish?
Yeah, that, and that, also in the ordinance, there are details about how long the noise is. Um, so, it, it's not just as plainly clear as this is what the, the, the amount is.
One of the sixty-decibel bits says, "Compare the normal conversation with the equivalent of a dishwasher, a washing machine, a fire office, or a air conditioner."
Right, so, that is the low level, again, that's a continuous thing. So, it is, um, again, you know, if, if, if we want to, to bring up that level, but when I say it's, the thing you gotta remember, too, is it's, it's where it's heard on the neighboring property. It's not right here, you know, so, it, it's, you know, because the, the sound amount tra- it doesn't completely travel, obviously.
How, how long is the continuous noise when you put it on, like, ten minutes long, fifteen minutes long, thirty minutes long? The reason I'm asking that is because, either.
Right.
So, let's say that we're, we have a job and there's saws going, there's gun nails going.
Yeah.
So, are we talking about fifteen minutes of noise and then all of a sudden, I say, we can do nothing?
Yeah, no, I believe in the ordinance, we did have an exception. If it's not in there right now, we would add it for construction, as long as it's during certain time periods. Yeah, no, that, that's very, very reasonable. And, again, we are soliciting feedback for the exceptions, uh, to, to the rule. And, and, and if we need to, if, if the feeling, uh, from, from those in the audience, from, from those in the community that that is too low of a standard, we are willing to, to make those modifications. I, I've said that before. The thing I would really wanna impart upon everyone is, we can disagree about what the standard can be. That is a very reasonable, I, I, the thing that I, and I know I speak for the men who, who are up here tonight, is that the reason we're doing this and explaining it from what the reasoning behind the ordinance is is because that, we believe there's been some misperceptions as to why this is occurring, or why these ordinances are occurring. We want everyone to understand that these are feedback, these are, are concerns and issues that we have heard, that the county hears every day. And so, there may be a, a better way to solve, uh, what the issue is, but that, these issues aren't gonna go away and, and without, without being proactive, without doing something. And so, that is really the reason behind how this whole project got, got started. So. Uh, so, it's, there would be no arrest, a- as I understand it, from, from the, from the talks we've had with the, uh, county prosecutor's office and the sheriffs, it would be a ticket. So, it would be like getting a speeding ticket. Yes, sir?
So, have they done any studies on impact of, of more, all of them done, or they could tell them?
Uh, I, I, I know of no studies of that, but I'm, I'm, I'm more than happy to see that. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, and remember, that's not setting next to it. That would be, if he's sixty decibels, I would cheat. No, I'm proud of the top of the college. And, uh, the bottom of that lesson, that's, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that's a very valid, uh, concern. I would say the reason we got that number is based on, on our view of similar, similar ordinances. Um, but, so, no one is, is set, that is not a hard set ordinance, uh, number. What we want to convey is that this has been an issue, um, and we are looking for ways to solve this issue. And so, I think that, you know, when, anytime when I do a project like this, we put out a first draft, there are always edits that occur. I have not done one project where there hasn't been edits. And there will, there will be more edits from what we have here. Um, I think some of the, the feeling from, from most of us here is that there was some feeling that this was gonna be adopted tomorrow and that was never, never the intention, so. That is not in the enforcement section. Um, now, when you say a business, um, uh, so, we, we, yeah, we, we, there are sections of the enforcement section that definitely need, need work through and are not in the, the, the first year act.
So, question. So, if there is noise, too loud, or whatever, and it's a guest, it's not us, or under the handles five?
Yeah. And so, that's one of the reasons that in the short-term rental ordinance, which we'll get to, is that there's guest conduct rules. So, they're going to be signing that. And I recognize that a lot of them will just sign it and not read it. But legally, if they've signed it, they're responsible for their signature. That wouldn't be held against the short-term rental owner. That's going to be a ticket against the tenant. Yeah. That's a very good question.
Would you mind repeating the question to the people on the bike community here?
Yes, I will try my best to repeat it. If I don't get it exactly correct, please, the person who's asking, please, correct me if that's true.
I've got another question.
Yeah.
Probably a neighbor's question.
No.
But, help me understand, where's the townships at in all of this? What part of the Bay area? I mean, because, I mean, I'm on the Philadelphian County, and I'm never going back with going off of that. So, now we got the counties.
Now, when you say township, do you mean in this county?
No, no.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. So, the townships in this county do not have individual zoning ordinances. They don't have these individual regulations. A lot of the townships are very small. They, and I don't want to speak for the townships, but my understanding is that they are looking for the county to lead the way in these regulatory areas.
So, will they have any partners in force in any way?
I'm going to, you know, as of now, we don't, we don't believe that would be the case.
Because half of the bed tax is still to that township.
Well, the different, the bed tax, as far as that goes, and I would have to talk with the bed tax administrator to answer that question. But my understanding is financially, there are some townships that are doing quite well, and there are other townships that are extremely strained in their budgets in this county.
So, they don't have to do everything? So, what impact are they going to have to do?
We have a record, we have a...
We have a township representative on the cremation, and it's John Fuller right here. He was recommended to us as the representative for the Township Trustees Association. So, he will be part of that five that eventually votes to move whatever it is forward. So, that's how township is, the townships are being represented.
Sir, are you suggesting that the township should be handling this or developing?
Well, in my township, if somebody wants to put in a wedding venue, they got to go through the township, right?
That's, that's...
That doesn't matter in due...
Yeah, but that's township zoning, and we don't have that.
That's why I'm asking.
So, I'd like to kind of talk a little bit about that. My experience has been, do you mind me asking, is that a township in an urban area? Or is it?
Fairfield County.
Fairfield County?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, it's not, it's not a very urbanized, I'm sorry, I didn't hear when you said Fairfield. So, there, it, in some of the smaller counties in the state, a lot of the townships have very limited kind of operational capacity. So, I've seen, when I've worked in other counties, smaller counties, that the townships play a much, much smaller role in regulatory items. The smaller the county generally, the less that they play.
Well, I know in our, in our township, I mean, we have our fire department, you know, our township there. And I look at, you know, where we're at in Washington Township and Hocken Town, I mean, it's large enough that, especially being where it's at, why don't these townships have fire departments? Why don't they have resources to that? We definitely pay, I know we're going out on checks and not, you know. So, I'm trying to figure out what township does with all that money. You say they're taking stairs and roads, is that all the township does?
Roger, does that answer that question?
Yeah. Well, all the answer is, I'm the fiscal officer, and the funding that we get for 3% really doesn't equate to some of the other townships. So, we don't have a fire department, because we couldn't afford a fire department. We do.
But that's why it's a different fire department, because we have...
But how much money do you break? How much money do you have?
And then, what happens if...
We didn't come here to talk about this. We didn't come here to talk about this.
Um, okay. Yeah, so, for those, um...
I want to clarify, you have a time frame.
I'm speaking.
I'm in a noise environment. I'll just...
They need to hear it. They need to hear it.
On a noise environment, you have a time frame. It really doesn't take effect until 10, 11 p.m.
That's correct.
For around a day.
Right.
You guys can have your music, you can play whatever you want, do whatever you want for the day.
That's correct.
It's generally after 10, 11 o'clock. So...
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think that's the case. I think there is a different level.
Yeah, I believe, I believe there's a different level, and I have to look back. But if memory serves me from the first draft, there are different levels to the decibels for the day and the night. Now, if, if the majority, if people feel that the issue is just at night, and that's what all that needs to be regulated, again, I've said, I've said this since we started this project, you know, we want to get at what the issue is and regulate what the issue is without overregulating. That is the goal of this. And so, if that's where the true issue is, only during, that may be the better way to go at it. And so, that's why we're seeking input. That's why we've had meetings like this. And, you know, and that's a takeaway for me. If the issues that you're talking about is just at night, I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's the way to go with it.
If they move rid of the complaints coming in, or maybe after 10, or after 11?
I believe most of the complaints, now, again, I will have to, that's another question for our sheriff's department when they get here on the short-term rental. But my understanding is that is when most of the complaints are coming in. I'm not sure if it's all complaints. But I will let him speak on that matter. Ma'am, you've been patient.
How early are the appointments? So, I live a place where the street building on the road are around 9:30. That bird fan is annoying as heck. That's six of them. And my neighbors have people, and they're like, "Huh?" I mean, it's, how early? Is that where I have to...
7:00 a.m.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a quarter B. That's...
Like, that's a lot of hours.
Yeah, that's a 9:30. And we hear it.
So, 10, 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. is 50 decibels.
You know, and, you know, what I'm hearing across the board is that we need to raise the levels, which is, I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not tied to that. I don't think anyone's tied to it. But the, the issue of there being noise complaints, again, is occurring, and we want to, the county's at a point where they feel like it needs to be addressed.
With the noise ordinance, an overregulation, do you have any type of, how many complaints we are actually being, is it, and this is where maybe we're punishing more people for a few complaints?
I would have to wait for the sheriff's department to answer the number.
Sheriff's Department's back here. Do you have any input on that question?
I'm going to bring you the...
How much, how often do you get noise complaints? And I, let me put a caveat in there. I'm sure we get less than we would get if there was a way to enforce it. I think that's fair to say.
If people know they can call in, they're going to do something about, they're going to start calling in.
I want to make sure that we make adjustments. I'm sorry, Ben.
As far as stats for noise complaints, I don't have the actual stats. They come and go. Sometimes it happens a lot for a short period of time. It all depends on how busy the county is at the moment. We've had a lot less noise complaints than what we did in the past, because we are, you know, we are staying on then. We do go out to the homes. There's a lot of things you can enforce, but with our presence seems to help come up really all it takes. So, that is what we are trying to do to combat it and ensure people know that we're doing our very best to help with that situation.
Got it. Any other gentleman here?
So, procedurally, how it's going to happen, we've got ordinance, we've got an order. What's the next step for me to, I don't think that they've been forced. How is that?
Yeah. So, to, for this to be enacted, the procedure is that the zoning commission has to make a recommendation on these, on the ordinances. That recommendation would then go to the county commissioners. The county commissioners have to enact that. There is no hard timetable on when that is going to occur. The zoning commission meets every, the last Thursday of every month at 2:00, I believe, at 2:00. We're going to, in the last couple of weeks, I would say we've received a lot of feedback. We're trying to go through that feedback. We'll be talking about that feedback in the zoning commission meeting. I don't, I don't know if there would be a motion to move it forward at that meeting, or if it would be a future meeting. But the recommendation does have to come from the zoning commission. And I know it's called the zoning commission, even though we're not quote-unquote doing zoning. That's how it was set up for the Ohio revise code legal reasons. But they have to make that recommendation, and then it goes to the county.
What's the distinction? So, are we not actually enacting the definition?
That's correct. So, the definition of zoning is when you put a map up, and you say there are different districts, and you can only do certain land uses in certain districts. And you, there's some districts where, whether it's, it could be a district would totally preclude a short-term rental, or it could preclude residential, or exclude commercial. The approach that in draft form, based on the comments that we've received, is not to create a map and say, "You can do this here, you can't do this here," but to have some level of standards for all of these things. So, we're not telling anyone, "No, you can't absolutely do this in one area of the county."
But it sounds to me as if you are restricting land use.
Well, we're restricting land use by having standards for the land use, but we're not totally prohibiting a land use. And that's the definition.
I know when I'm in short-term rental, it's not, but certainly you will be restricting land use with a short-term rental.
No.
Well, if it's a permit, by means of padding permit, that means it can be taken from the way, which is the restriction, from the specific name. Is that not right?
So, so, it, so, we are not saying that you have to have, that you cannot do this in one area. What we are saying is that there are certain standards that have to be met before you get the permit. There's no map that says this area you can do the short-term rentals, this area you can't. That would be true zoning.
All right. And that would be better. You should then put this on, or you could say, "Okay, we're here, I'm telling you to do this. I know that I can do it where you do. I know that I can do the action. I know that I can do, oh, I can do." Because it's actually a rental, for business on a 300, $100,000, $100,000, or whatever it is you're building, a business. Knowing that, yes, I can do this, and it could be for the future, which is common sense, so it's proposing that that's something that could take away.
No, that's not what we're proposing. We're saying if you meet the standards, you can do it.
And the problem, the problem with zoning is, zoning...
The zoning does not preclude you from those standards. You have the zoning and the standards when you have the zoning ordinance. Ask anybody, ask Roger, who's done anything in the city of Logan. You've got setbacks, you've got coverages that are prohibited, you've got height requirements. There's all sorts of things. There's building code in the city of Logan. All those things are in addition to the zoning. So, if you have a lot that's, that's now zoned residential, R1, you cannot put a short-term rental in there.
Right. Right. But that's helpful for someone who's planning a business, and you know what you can't.
Well, and you would in this case as well.
Okay. So, how is that different from when something happens that's outside of your control, this summer, that then takes away your ability to do that business? So...
There's nothing we're proposing that would take away your ability to do that business.
Okay. So, so, you go to grandfather everybody in?
That's a question that's, is being bandied about. I don't know. There'd be some, I would imagine.
Because if you don't figure out somebody else, this...
So, what we're looking at as far as the grandfathering goes, is there, there are two things. There's some, and we'll go through this on the short-term rental. There are a few items that are not quote-unquote safety items. Most of the time, that when grandfathering occurs, safety regulations are not grandfathered in. That, I mean, I see that across the board in jurisdictions throughout. So, that is the concern, is if it is a true safety requirement, for example, let's take deck safety. There's a requirement as far as making sure that that's stable, or that the deck is stable. I mean, it would put the county in a very difficult position by essentially saying, "Well, we're not sure if the deck is stable, but we're going to grandfather that in." So, that's kind of what the county's concern is as it relates to grandfathering. But there are some provisions that are in the short-term rental ordinance that are not that and could be considered for grandfathering.
So, we go to every resident and, now, like, we'll check your decks. We go to your backyard, say, "Well, that's, that's..."
Let's, let's wait till we get to the short-term, let's wait, let's wait till we get to the short-term rental ordinance.
This is the hall?
No, no.
That's the reason.
So, again, the rationale, the reasoning, the county has seen the deck collapse. It is only a matter of time until another deck collapses. And it was on a short-term rental ordinance. You know?
I understand that situation, and the house, the first deck is not enough for a house.
I don't, I do not know the details on that. I would, when the, when our safety responders are here, they may know the details on that. But I do know that there has been a deck that has collapsed.
We have to share it with you in the front. So, back to the weddings and mechanics, so, I've got a business that I'm operating that is a lab with a plant nature, but operating above the decibels that you're talking about in Florida. Would this not prevent me from operating the business on a continuous and ongoing basis?
What is, what is the business?
This is a fact.
Oh, okay.
This is a...
Yeah. Well, I was going to say, construction.
On a continuous and ongoing basis. So, if members start complaining about that, you know, how is that not a sugar dust, anyway?
It is, it is, it is restricting the land use, but again, it is not prohibiting the land use outright. And that is the difference between a land use regulation and zoning from a legal perspective.
What about a land use regulation?
No, I mean...
Like, not possible.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you, are you involved with the wedding, you know, the wedding venue process? Again, that would be through the special event permit process, and that is something that...
Do you have any special amount for your...
Well, that, I don't know, because we have passed that off to the EMA department. They will be here later, and they can answer that.
Will they have to approve that, for the township, the regulations, or you can split them if they want?
The...
Did they regret that statement?
Well, for each township, will they have to accept these regulations, or the county will block it, or the township...
They do not have to accept the regulations legally.
Yeah. So, the county, so, I'll answer with that, because I heard what Ody said, and I agree with that. The, if, if, my understanding of the law is if the township does nothing, then those regulations are enacted. However, if the township votes, the township trustees vote to opt out, then they can do that. But you have to affirmatively do that. You can't, the onus is on you to affirmatively opt out.
Is it the trust usually connects that, or is it a vote from the right-hand side?
It is. It is the township trustees that would opt-out, that would not be a vote. As I understand the law.
So, I was reading through the 303 today, and I think it's section 11. I thought it was pretty clear, just to say, with rural areas, that I'm cooperating with that, with that.
That is true if it is, if it is zoning, and it is prohibiting the land use. Yeah. That's correct. Zoning is a higher level of regulation, because zoning would say, "This area of the county, you can absolutely not do that." But I think the thing that Audi mentioned to you, which is totally true, is, if you took the list of those site standard regulations, those are still in a zoning district. You just have certain districts that you absolutely cannot do that land use.
But the difference, though, is zoning, I can't be shut down because my neighbors can do it.
If you can.
If, if someone gets started property zoning, because they've got a town that you've seen it along the property stand, okay, in the city of Logan, with the, the town, wedding venue, whatever that is, neighbors keep complaining, they pay a higher property tax to do the zoning? They absolutely do pay a higher-
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm saying the standards would still apply, no matter. If you have a noise ordinance in place, it doesn't matter what you're zoned for, there would be limits set.
Sure.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't get you out of following other, uh, specific requirements.
So, I understand that, that, okay, so there's ordinances and then there's the ability to, or vote once voted. And I think that's the one that most people are concerned about, is, okay, are we getting shut down?
The only way you get shut down is if you don't meet the standards.
Right. And the standards are, now, if we're talking for-
Correct.
Yeah.
So, are there any other questions on those three ordinances?
So, so I have my wedding venue, you know, it's gone off in five, 10 years. Everything, everything's happy, and then all of a sudden, there's a neighbor that doesn't like me, and he starts complaining. That's why we do the grandfathering.
Yeah, and, 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 like I said, there are some areas where grandfathering is a very valid argument, and I think you just made a very valid argument as far as grandfathering. That's not a safety, truly a safety requirement. Our biggest concern, my biggest concern, and the gentleman's concerns that are up here, is the true safety requirements for grandfathering.
And Roger, I would say I agree with that, because, an example you just used, if your neighbor moves in, and they know you have a wedding venue, that's the choice they've made.
That's on them.
It's on them. I, I, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I, you know, I, I, I agree with that. I, you know, I think that is a very good, that is, that's why we don't want to make a blanket statement that says, "Everything's grandfathered, everything's not grandfathered", because it really depends upon what we're talking about.
So, the other ordinances that there are talking about right now, is it just the noise order?
The noise ordinance, the site standards, and, let's put that back up on the screen, and the, the impact fees. The impact fees would definitely only be for, um, for, for new construction. There's no, I mean, that, by its nature, you're grandfathering them, you know? Because it, it only occurs when there's something new that's built.
What are resulting in that impact fee?
Yeah, uh, so unfortunately, we don't have the exact numbers, because we have to get with the county auditor and other offices there. We've been notified of a large amount of, of, of state law on that, which is not my area of expertise, and we want to make sure that we're doing that correctly. Uh, but what I will say is that the idea is, not only the idea, but I understand the law, is that it has to be directly connected to the growth. So, it is not going to be something that funds any other, you know, agency or whatever. It is directly funded so that the county can keep up, from a growth perspective, with police, fire, all those things that come with growth, that they're struggling to meet the demand for.
So, when you're talking about the impact fees, this isn't considering a direct or indirect long-term stake issue, that you're gonna get back to me in the end?
Could you, could you explain a little more about that?
Yes, so, the same pledge in this cycle, they allow $25 million per program, for counties, any municipality to apply for these specific, uh, infrastructure improvements. So, many counties that are funding preview construction absolutely qualifies for either the grant or the loan program itself. So, those go into effect in reverse, without even being assessed. So, Akon County has a big development coming through, and $25 million, or sort of a partner improvement, it will qualify on the other line.
Yeah, but that's really intended for major economic development projects. I don't think that's, I'd love for that to be a problem or not in county. In fact, that's one of my goals, to do that, so, yeah. It's out there, but I don't see any, uh, in the future that we qualify. There's nothing on the ra, in the radar right now that's called that.
You're definitely qualified with the loan program.
Yeah. But, but we've gotta have a, a project that supports it.
What do you do with that? Do you use commerce hardware?
We don't, we're gonna have a residential project.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next year?
Off.
If there aren't any other questions on the short-term rentals, let's, let's take a break and just- No, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. If there are, I was, I was saying, yeah, yeah. Uh, if, if there aren't any other questions on the, the three other ordinance set, ordinances, let's take a quick short break. Yes?
So, some of you were at the meeting last Tuesday evening. Thanks for letting us participate in your, in your meeting. And I do want to say, some people looked at that as a time to, uh, voice frustration. I think there was some, there were a lot of positive comments that came out. We learned a lot from it. Thank you to your good work there, sir, and navigating through that. Uh, but also, I also want to say that since that time, we've gotten a lot of positive communication, uh, written and emailed to say, "Here's my concern, I listened to, or I was there, I've read it, I've read the update, here's my concern." So, I would say that's still the case, not just for short-term rentals, but these other items as well. Actual comments, please continue, because everybody said it, and we'll continue to say, "We're going to continue to listen." Uh, at some point, we're gonna have to say, "Okay, we're gonna make some decisions." But in the short term, if you have other comments, you didn't get the chance to share today, please make sure that Audi or myself make us aware, and we will continue to listen and provide feedback as best we can, because this doesn't happen well without all of us having participation.
Yeah.
You did a great act, I thought you were going to, but fees, or whatever, for festivals?
Yeah, that, again, would be under the special event permit, and I will-
We're not talking about that?
EMA.
So, EMA, we'll talk about that. We, we, we highlighted it as an issue, but the EMA started working on their own on that. We kind of had a meeting together, and it was decided they were gonna move forward with that, not us. So-
Is it fair to say, on the obvious question, is it fair to say that, once we get another draft from them, we can have a similar public?
Oh, oh, definitely, yeah. Definitely, yeah. We, we, we had a, we met with, uh, we met in the EMA, and we had a good, uh, meeting with, with various representatives, the fire, sheriff, and EMS, and, uh, and as well, the, uh, assistant prosecuting attorney was there. He is working on, he had some very good input, knows the law well. Um, he took what we had back with our, with our conversation and recommendations, and is working on that. As, as Michael says, at some point, we will have what they're proposing. It just won't appear one day.
But don't you think you should talk about it?
That's what I'm saying. We're going to. That's what I'm saying we're going to do. Yeah. Though we don't have it, the, the attorney's not done with it yet. Yeah.
Yeah, on your regard for the impact fee, we're just going to proceed that. It's just the county gonna get it, and if we do have new development, what ensures that person's not getting a payment that doesn't contribute to the growing performance of the least, fire, EMS?
You're talking about a, a payment in term, in terms of-
Yeah, in terms of building a house, or cabin, or business, or brewery, or winery, or restaurant, or apartment complex.
I think it's fair to say that they, the state, jobs Ohio, Ohio Southeast, will continue to be aggressive in providing incentives. Although, who knows what's going on with legislature right now, property tax revisions. Who knows what's gonna come out of Columbus? I hope it's significant changes, honestly, in the way the property tax. But I, I think it's fair to say that the impact fee will still be in place, regardless, regardless of what incentives get. So, I, I think it's whoever is impacted by the, the cost of the impact.
Is it going to the township, and the county, or the split-in impact fee?
Yeah. So, as I said, that is something that we need to talk with, with the auditor and the attorney, and the county attorney that works with the auditor. There is a large amount of law and regulations that go along with that impact fee. It's where they go and do not go. That is not my specialty area of the law, um, in any way, shape, or form. Um, so, that, that conversation needs, needs to happen. But what I will say is that I do know that there aren't a lot of policy options. It is, as I understand it, it's pretty well regulated in state law as to what has, how it has to be done.
So, does the county have any future plans to try to come up with some type of, or plot maps on where it should go, or should it go?
Not at this time.
I mean, we're doing that there, on the township.
Mm-hmm. Well, again, this is a lower le, level of regulations than zoning. I, it absolutely is. I, I, mostly what I do is, is write zoning ordinances. And I can tell you that zoning is a higher level of regulation. It prohibits, outright prohibits certain locations that you cannot do certain land uses.
When you add something like that, even if the township wants it, then they would control it. Because if somebody wanted to put a short-term rental in, they would have to go get a conditional use, because they're after, and after the business. And then, that's all the neighbors that surround that property, but also have a setting.
Well, most of the time with zoning ordinances, yes, there is a public hearing where someone could come out and, and say, "I don't want that business", but typically, zoning ordinances are written that have standards, and if you meet those standards, you get the permit. So, the only difference we're saying here is that we're not restricting in certain locations where land uses can go. It is less restrictive. And we're not saying, "In this zoning district, you can't do short-term rentals. In this zoning district, you can." That, that is not what is being proposed today. The idea here is that there are significant safety concerns, and if those safety concerns can be dealt with, then, then you're good to go.
So, if six flags comes come out and put the amusement park in on 664, they can do that?
As it stands today, that, there isn't any, any real preclusion for that.
But, they would have-
But, they would have standards to meet.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what the, uh, that's what the one ordinance is that we're looking at, the site standards. So, they couldn't just come in and do whatever they wanted to do. They would have to mitigate the impact on the neighbors.
But today, those site standards are not in place, so there is, there is absolutely nothing.
I just want to make one comment about zoning. You asked, could we put it in place? I attended five of the six public meetings, and at the end, Audi had three boards and said, "Do we need zoning? Do we need some regulations?" Or, I don't know what the third board was, but I went to five of the six, and not one person said, "We need zoning." So, if I have half a brain, it says to me that nobody in Akon County is interested in zoning. So, you ask the question, "Are we gonna do it someday?" I think it was pretty clear. There were quite a few people in those meetings. No one said, "We need zoning." Unless I missed a board. Nobody said, "We're gonna do zoning."
But there were people that felt like, "Hey, if something comes in next to me, I want to have some, some of these site standard requirements, so that it doesn't impact me as much." And I know the point that the gentleman made, which is, you know, I'm already here. Uh, you know, if someone now moves, I, I understand that, but that's why the site standards apply to someone who is going to be developing a property.
Then about, you're talking about impact fee, okay, it's fine. But, like I said, I need a tax evasion, like, you know, my office building, my steel building, barbecue, and all those obstacles that activate to help me build a building. And now you have to charge fees, but we need development, we are not going to do development by charging fees.
Well, and I, I, I would repeat what we said throughout every single meeting, and, and I know everyone up on the state agrees with me. Any fee that is being charged is not to increase revenue, it is just to cover the county's costs. That is the intent.
But you're giving a tax evasion to get people like me to others to build it.
Yeah, but the tax benefits are city-level, never after.
Yeah, and what we're proposing doesn't affect city-level, anyway.
But we haven't even dealt with it.
But it wasn't, wasn't a county. Wouldn't, wouldn't he want me to build a, a factory on the outside of the county? Give it a tax. We could build a new person when they're, say, hey, can we do this?
Roger, I, I've been at what we need to develop for a long time. That's all part of the negotiation. It's all part of the conversation. Okay, we're gonna give you a million dollars, but yeah, it's gonna cost you 50,000 infrastructure costs. That's all part of the give and take. That's what happens.
Okay, if there are other questions, I think we need to take about a 10-minute break, and then, at 7:00 o'clock, we'll come back and talk about the short-term rental.
Yeah.
So, it's a short-term rental, or are you just kinda chilling?
Yeah.
Hey, Audi? Audi?
Audi!
Audi, answer. It's me. It's the gate. Tell him to answer my pound call. Yes. Yes.
It's our fee.
It's an answer. Try again. Go ahead. Yeah, we're trying to get another mic. Can you grab his mic and see what it says on it? I'm looking at the little screen in the middle. What does the little screen say? Okay, hit a button, choose, either menu or...
Check, check, check.
Are you gonna try and change this? Thank you. I know, I believe. All right, I'll call you back. Trying, trying really hard.
What's that?
What did you do?
Good evening. Welcome to the, back to those who have been here, to the folks who just came in. This part of the conversation relates to short-term rentals. The format of this conversation is going to be, the three emergency responders, EMS, fire, sheriff, are gonna kind of give their input on why some of these ordinances are relevant, okay? Wanted to hear that. These are short, three to five minutes, although Penny says she wants, she's got a half-hour presentation she wanted to do. And then David is gonna kind of give the reasons behind the ordinances, kind of explain that. That was asked at the meeting last week, is, "Tell us why." Several people in the follow-up conversation said, "Tell us why," don't agree. And then, we have two speakers from the owners, and then Joe, Joe is gonna kind of wrap up the conversation. So, that's the format for this evening. And again, as we've said all along, this does not end today. We'll continue to listen, please, please continue to provide feedback. If you have questions that don't get resolved, and you don't see the answers to your questions tonight, please let us know if you have any distant questions, and we'll do our best to get those answered. Okay? That's the format. So, David, you have this. I'm gonna hand the microphone to these folks over here. I think, I think you're first, Bobby.
Sheriff's. Sheriff's first? Yeah. Sheriff's first, I'm sorry. Come on up, David. If you want to get stacked, Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff's Office, I'm sorry.
In Section 3 of the Regulation Draft, I had noticed the completion of the local contact person's information. Reason why I saw it, of course, for the Sheriff's Office, these address of safety standards are crucial for notifying property contacts in case of emergencies. Many types of emergencies arise while enjoying the Hocking Hills. Extremely often, our 911 centers answer calls for mental health situations, with no one to contact to find a personal background for unknown individuals on the phone. For example, the name of a person who made a cabin may be rented to, or the license plate on the vehicle that's listed on the renter's agreement. Your local contact person initially knows more about these people than they do. This is for the emergency personnel's safety and the well-being of your renters. Another reason for this, the alarms are another huge issue. We have, almost every cabin, at least most of them, have alarms installed in the winter aids. There is a lot of false alarms that comes into the 911 center. We check every single alarm that comes out, whether it's real, whether it's false, or where your alarm is malfunctioning. If we have no contact information for these cabins, how will you know that they're malfunctioning? And this does happen often. We will respond every time the alarm company calls us, as if your cabin is being broken into, or your homes, it doesn't matter if it's a cabin or an actual residence. If we have no one to contact, there's no one to let know that this is happening, or if something is a burglary or rape and endangerment, who do we contact? Without this contact information, we cannot properly connect with you. Also, in Section 3, the addresses of each STR are very necessary. It is extremely frustrating to turn onto a drive that branches off those sides of the road with no indication of the cabin's addresses. We know someone nearby needs our help, but we cannot locate them due to unmarked cabins, which is extremely unnecessary and dangerous. We regularly encounter the issue of cabins not being properly identified by address placards on roadways or for internal properties. It happens, they are all over the county. By not confirming, conforming to that regulation, it slows response time dramatically for all of us fresh responders. These addresses are recorded in our mapping and reporting systems at the emergency zone. Now, I'm not saying all of these cabins are fully marked. We have some very responsible cabin owners, but this is not everybody. Most of our local cabin owners are the ones who take it very seriously, but we have many out-of-state cabin owners that we cannot contact to even ask them to mark their cabins. So, we have a hard time finding them. The last concern in Section 3 is the BCI and FBI background check that was suggested. I would add to that for also the caretakers, that if you are not a local, you need to have caretakers, also have BCI and FBI background check. There have been investigations involving despicable crimes that could have been possibly avoided if a background check had been conducted. Imagine what the cabinet business would look like in Hocking Hills if it was circulated that felonies were committed by cabin owners in the county. This does happen. No one wants that place for any reason. It's not an invasion of privacy, it's meant to protect everyone involved. In Section 4, the other proposal, proposals or regulations suggest the parking arrangements and requirements. If they do not have ample parking, they will park in the roadway. If not parked on the roadway, they will park alongside of the driveway. This is a safety issue for emergency personnel to reach a victim or patient at the cabin, or if their vehicle slides off the hillside, and yes, sometimes the people are still in it. That happens quite often, in many ways.
You guys want to come up together? Again, Bobby Platts, Director of EMS Services. Thank you, guys, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and like the feedback here. Been with Hocking County EMS since 1993, full-time since 1998, and I've seen kind of the whole progression of the short-term rental, from an EMS perspective, from start to finish. In 1998, the term "short-term rental" was not a thing, and if you would've said that to me, I'd have looked at you like that through the heads. But generally, as far as public safety is concerned, I think I can speak for just about everybody on the fire side, as well as law enforcement, that most of our issues are access issues, and a lot of these things run together. Driveways, a lot of the big issues with driveways are unsafe bridges. We do encounter, not just with cabins, with other residents in the county that have maybe that situation where the small stream runs along the roadway, and their home's on the other side of that stream. A lot of times, we run into a situation where we're looking at that bridge and wondering if our 16,000-pound vehicle's gonna be able to make it across that without causing an issue. So, we try to err on the side of caution. A lot of times, the residents are upset with this because we won't drive our vehicle across. But we're just trying to, to do what's best for the resources and not cause issues. We have limited resources as it is, and for us to collapse that bridge, not only damages your property, but it damages county property, and in a lot of cases, it's a kind of a severe situation where we don't have unlimited vehicles to be able to respond to emergencies. We have quite an aged fleet of ambulances, and we're working on trying to get those things replaced as best we can. A lot of financial issues involved with that. So, a lot of issues with unsafe bridges, I get low-hanging trees, you know, in the dark, it's not every occasion that does happen. Another situation is multiple rentals on one property. We have these situations where we get an address call, and we get the one driveway entrance, but there's like maybe six or seven cabin levels on there. Once we go down the driveway, there's a lot of times we're not seeing signage to direct us to the proper cabin, which does delay our ability to respond to these folks who are having these medical emergencies. Again, that goes along with that, that format that's made, sometimes hard to locate. It seems like there are new rentals coming online all the time. And a lot of times, the dispatchers will tell us, well, it's such-and-such, you know, cabin rentals, or, you know, whatever business name, or it is not familiar with it. It doesn't help us to have that information. So a lot of times, we have a lot of locating issues with that. Another issue here is parties that kind of happen at these places. Some experiences I've had, and I'm sure Chief Stack and the Assistant Chief here can reiterate what I'm saying here. An example would be, you know, maybe we'll get a call for a diabetic emergency at one of the cabins. So we respond with two people and an ambulance to that call, which is a standard call-out for that. And we show up and there's a party going on. So maybe the cabin is designed for maybe four people or whatever, however that is set up. But nobody knew that 10 people showed up at this cabin for a party. So we go in there, start with, we can't get the truck to the location. A lot of times, we have to park on the highway, which is a safety issue. Another part of that is when we get in there, you know, obviously, we know what comes with a party. I mean, there's a lot of drinking, a lot of alcohol going on there. And we get one ill person who's severely ill, and we have nine people that want, dreaded air quotes, "help us out." So that is not good, and it creates a safety issue, and then we have to get law enforcement involved. Another part of that is these typically, it's been my experience, that the folks that come down and rent the cabins aren't from the area. They come from a long way off. And so they don't understand the dynamic out here. So they come down here in the middle of nowhere, they rent a cabin, they're a little bit out of their element. And one thing, they, we kind of get pushed back a lot of times when we go to one of those places and we pick somebody up or treat them for an emergency situation, and we want to transport them to the hospital. They don't understand that we can't take their loved one to Riverside, Columbus. We just don't have the resource to do that. So we have a lot of negative feedback from folks like that who feel like their needs aren't being met because we can't do the things that they may have been able to have done if they're in the city of Columbus, if they're at the home residence. That common cause for medical trauma, unsafe environment, I've already dealt with that. Rental situation awareness, again, that goes back to that point I last made there. The last point I would like to make before I move on, the next slide, is the safe patient removal from residents. There, it's not every cabin, it's not every residence, but we do have situations where we don't have the ability to get our cot into the cabin. You know, there may be it's a, maybe a weird-shaped, you know, dwelling or whatever. And the only option for us to get somebody who can't walk is to get them on a stair chair, maybe take them down a steep flight of steps off of the, you know, off of a deck or something like that. So we could use some assistance of being able to get people out of these places safely. We move on to the next. Okay, so I tried, I wanted to come tonight and bring at least some useful information. And I was looking around this morning, and I thought I'd try to use AI to maybe help me a little bit with some information gathering. So, and I do not, I did not get the references up. And I can probably get those secondhand here from the information that's gathered here, but I did use AI to come up with some of this stuff. And these are estimated run volumes for Hocking County EMS over the last 20 years. That 2005 number, I would say is fairly accurate, 2,200 runs. And I know that's hard to see. But I feel like that would be a fairly accurate progression of run volume over the last 20 years. The one thing that I would point out is that this 2025 number, that 4,300, we're going to do 4,700 plus this year by years end. Next slide here. Just a little contrast from that. In 2002, we did 2,054 runs. I did not have a database for this. I kind of had to get up in the attic this morning and look, find the possible run sheets that were handwritten back in the day. We used to do stuff like that. So 2,054 runs, and, next slide. In 2021, right coming out of COVID, to be honest, I feel like 2021 was COVID for the EMS folks in the county. We did 4,373 calls. That was a record that we set that year for our run volume. Today, to date, we've done 3,732 calls, and again, projected to do 4,700 by the end of the year. So we're getting, we're getting much busier. You know, we basically more than doubled our run volume over the last 20 years. I want to compare that to maybe how the population has been doing. And based on what I found with my AI and what it generated there, population, it seems to me like it is at best stagnant, if not maybe lower than what it was 20 years ago. I did look today at the auditor's website, and that 27,000 number, I think they had a little over 28,000 for their population number. But generally, it's pretty much stayed the same over the 20 years, which, which is kind of shocked me when I saw that. And then the short-term rentals over the last 20 years. Again, when I started in 1993, that was a, that was a alien term, short-term rental. It says 1,550 this year. I think, I think I heard an 1,800 number, something more like that. So we've had a lot of growth. And one thing that I would like to say is I'm not up here trying to inhibit growth. I'm the type of person who loves to see growth. The only thing I want to be able to see happen is I want us to be able to compete or keep up with the growth. And we are really struggling to do that. That's it. That's my point, guys. We've had, there's been a lot of growth as far as tourism in the county. It's not just the cabin situations. It is tourism in general. And it's having a pretty big effect on public safety, folks. And again, it's not, it's not, for me, it's not about trying to get extra resources and extract extra money out of any money, but we want to keep up with the growth in the county, with the infrastructure and where our public safety is set up. And to me, aside from the safety issues that I brought up there, probably one of the biggest safety issues is the sheer volume of calls that we're handling with the same equipment, with an aging fleet of vehicles, that we did basically in 2005. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa, Logan Fire Department. I don't have a slideshow. Listen till I can make one. Sorry. So I do a lot of the, in the city, obviously, we have zoning. They regulate where you can put the short-term rentals, stuff like that. So if you're near school, they're not allowed to be 70 feet, stuff like that. So in the county, they're not saying, that's what you need to do. My concern, like Chief said, well, both Chiefs, the driveways. A lot of times, our big engine, we go out there either to assist EMS or we get a CO call or an alarm drop, they take that big engine down the driveway. It's not the right cabin, because it's not loaded properly. So that's one of our main things, making sure the numbers are lined up where they're supposed to be. We have had in the past, we had a structure fire. The address they gave was the 664 address for the place that they went and got the key to the place. They didn't have a clue where they were. So that's one thing is, we have to then try to figure out where they are, whether it's the 911 operator trying to ping them, and out in the county, it might be a problem with cell phones. And then getting able to find the proper address, that's a lot of times ours. The state of Ohio, even though, I've always said, being in the county, there's no zoning, there's not really regulations. The state of Ohio does regulate the entire state. So if you have a business in the county, whether, the short-term rental is still considered a business through the building department. They are under transient homes. They are R1, kind of fall into like a hotel motel. So we have stipulations that we go and check. So if you have one already operating that has a certificate of occupancy, they like to see a change of occupancy now, because it might have been a residential house. It falls under an R3, and you don't really have any stipulations. So once you change it to an R1, you are supposed to get a change of occupancy. And all it entails is getting on the portal, signing up, they ask us to go and do a safety check. Make sure, you have to have your smoke detectors. If one goes off, all of them go off. If you have gas appliances, you have to have CO detector outside of the, so far from the bedrooms. You have to have so many fire extinguishers. You have to have exits. When you do that, they also have the electrical checked. Because of course, for electrical, he'll make sure you have GFIs or certain surge protectors or whatever they're called now. He'll check the box, make sure it's safe. And your mechanical, he would check the structure, check the porches, check other stuff like that. So it's kind of an all-round. If you're within 30 feet of another property, the house is located within another 30 feet of any other property, then the county is probably not an issue. In the city, if you have this problem, they are supposed to be sprinkled. So they just have to, I've had two or three of them in the city just go and ask for bearings. And as long as we say, yeah, we're still going to respond, I let them up to them. And they don't have to do the sprinklers. But we just make sure you have everything you need. We have in the past had porch collapses, and that might be residential. It might not have been a short-term rental, I can't remember. But we can't go out and regulate your own personal house. But if you have people coming in, then that's when we're just asking for a little more safety, just making sure. And a lot of you guys, I mean, a lot of the cabins I get to have all that stuff anyways. But if you have that extra piece of paper to say you have that certificate of occupancy, then it just kind of helps me to feel better that everything's done, and then just making sure guidelines, addresses that are required, road restrictions, look at our trucks, how big are they? Are we going to be able to get to your property? Are you worried about us getting to your property? I mean, if someone's in there, what you're thinking, there's a fire there, we're called, you've got six people in there, are we going to be able to get there in case they get disoriented or they get trapped? I mean, are you covered on that aspect? So that's what we look at, EMS. I mean, like they said, we have to go help them. We've had a couple of people falling down steps and stuff. Are those steps properly put in? And just, it's us not wanting people to get injured, but it's also kind of protecting you guys, making sure everything is protected, so you can say, hey, the states that I was given, is the way I'm looking at it.
Well, I really want to thank the three of you for being here tonight. You know, throughout this process and other public meetings, I feel like I've been trying to explain kind of what you deal with on a daily basis. And so I think it is really great that you got to say that tonight from firsthand, because, you know, I think that that's powerful, because the number one thing I hear when I meet with representatives, and we've had full, not just the chiefs, but large group meetings with these agencies, is when, and I want you guys to nod your head so that if you agree with this statement, is when they have people who are in trouble in the county, isn't it true that, you know, their perception is that the response time should be quicker because where they're coming from doesn't have these issues, doesn't have these problems with driveways? So, you know, those complaints, the thing I want for those of you short-term rental owners to think about is to try to put yourself in their shoes about this, because those complaints don't typically come to you as the owner. They come to the government by saying, why were you not there to help me? And so that is the primary reason for this, is that, you know, I've heard Commissioner Linton say it, and I'll say it again, which is a serious concern for safety with the variety of issues that these people face on a daily basis. And the growth is just excruciating that. So if there's no takeaway, if that is the only, if there's one key takeaway that we would like for you to take back, is that is a serious, serious concern for these agencies, for us, and everyone involved with the county. And so, you know, I try to put myself in their shoes, and I try to explain it that way. I know I'm going on an emergency run, and I'm on, and I've, Audi and these gentlemen have taken me to some of, some of these, what I call driveways, because they're not roads, they're not public roads. They're driveways where there are numerous turns, numerous things. And I'm thinking, it's the dead of night, somebody has a serious, serious health problem. They've come here, they're not aware of their surroundings, they can't explain how to get to the house they're even at. It puts these, these people who are trying their best to help them at an incredible, incredible disadvantage. And so safety is the key, key element of this. So I'm going to, I had in here, we went through these other ordinances. I had in here items about, that I was going to talk about as far as address numbering requirements. I'm going to try to be as brief as I can for the, for the reasons and rationales that they talked about, because they can give you that information better firsthand than I ever can. But what I do want to say is just kind of add a few things, which is that is really the reasoning behind the numbering requirement and the internal property grounding signs is very much the same, is that it is very difficult for first responders here to be able to find the person that is in help. And that is the reason for that. We had in their occupancy limits, one of the concerns that I don't believe was addressed by the agencies tonight was that there have been times in certain locations, certain rentals, and again, I recognize this is not the vast majority of you, but there have been certain instances where they've been called out, and there are an extremely large number of people that are in and are bedded in a place. When I say bedded, they're, they're all put in like a basement area where there's only one access out. And to them, it appears a significant fire hazard and a significant safety concern. So, you know, we have reduced that standard. We understand that there are issues with camps and clinics and that kind of thing. Again, another takeaway I would like for everyone that is short-term rental owners to know, you know, these are the issues that we face, and we are comfortable taking input as to what that standard would be. This is a great example of one where we had a standard that maybe was a little too hot, and we heard from you and we reduced that because of, because of the reasons that you told us about camps and, you know, and that kind of thing. So, you know, I point this out because that's an example of where positive feedback we're hearing, we are listening, and we're putting that. But we want to make sure that the safety standard is still maintained. The agencies talked about required parking and driveway requirements. Again, if a very narrow driveway and the car is just parked there and they cannot get it, probably the most stunning story I've heard, and I've said this in a public meeting and I'll say it again. In one of the sessions, someone talked about where it was during the winter, there was a fire, and they were trying to go up the driveway, and the truck would not get it, would not be able to get up. So this fireman stopped the car, or stopped his truck, walked up to the top, and the person said, where is your truck? And the response was, I can't get it up there. And so they just sat there and watched the house burn. That's the reality of what some of the first responders in this county are dealing with. And so that's kind of the take-home that we want to have for them. Now, that's, that's, so those are the reasons between the driveway requirements and the required parking. Documentation as far as the health department, we have heard of concerns of substandard housing. And when I mean substandard housing, things where someone shows up at for what they thought was a nice short-term rental, and then they call, they look out and they look at the deck, and they say, there's no way I can stand on that without falling, you know, probably to their death. So again, I don't, we do not believe that is the majority of people, but you have to understand that... that when these things occur, people look at the government and say, why did you not protect them? And that is where we are coming from with this. Background check, as you heard, there are active cases, things that are not well publicly known, but do know that there are some things, puts the county in a very difficult position. If, can you imagine a news report that came out and said, well, county knew that there were active sex offenders, but they decided they, you know, they were going to leave that off of the permit. I mean, try to put yourself in that position. I do, I know I would want that if I am working directly from the county and that's why we're recommending that. The signed acknowledgement strengthens the enforcement. Permit fees, talked about this, there is no incentive for the county to actually make money on this. They're just trying to cover their costs. The 24 hour contact person, she did an excellent job, I talked about that, I want to go there. The target shooting, it goes to the tenant target shooting prohibited, it goes to situational awareness. There have been concerns where people have been called out. When I say people have been called out, first responders have been called out where someone thought that they were very much in a very open, unpopulated place, but it turned out they weren't. And there were some serious safety concerns and it's lucky that someone didn't take a stray bullet. Gas conduct and notice information, again, that strengthens enforcement on your side, I believe. Because it lets your tenants know, hey, we have these rules that we have to follow from the county. Someone brought up a question about that earlier. And so that's the reason behind that. Deck safety, again, county has had decks that have fallen on short term rentals. And so that is the reason for that. We have had discussions on the landscaping. I think there's been a perception that landscaping was required for every property. It was only for properties that were very close. The idea for that is a neighborhood protection thing. You know, if you, if you live out from the county and you thought you were buying this piece of property that was not going to be rented, it feels like a motel to you, but at least there's something that screens you from that. That was the reason behind that. The structures being prohibited kind of goes with what we were talking about before, which is making sure that they're just a basic standard level of things that are being rented. And so I have had questions, does this include campgrounds? This does not include campground, that is under a different thing. But there have been situations where people have thought they were renting an eye short term rental and then they came and found there was no running water, there was no issue. And then they, as I understand, they had problems contacting the agency that they rented from. So that was the reason for that. Renter age requirement, reason for that. You heard about the large number of parties and things that people deal with. It becomes very difficult for first responders as well when they, when they don't have a responsible party that is 21 or up and there's a large amount of alcohol. It just adds to their burden, that's the reason behind that. Minimum rental period, I have worked in jurisdictions where things started getting rented out by the hour. That creates even more issues than that you're currently seeing. More traffic, more people coming and going from driveways where people can't go ahead and get up, get, or the first responders cannot get up to the location to begin with. Proof of insurance, you know, if something were to burn or something were to be dismantled or something were to fall down, then the unfortunate reality is that there have, and I've seen this in other jurisdictions where the county's kind of left, heck, holding the bag, so to speak, becomes a nuisance property, it stays there for years. And at the end of the day, that's something that the county has to deal with. And then the last two were just about taxing to make sure that the taxing is occurred. So with that, I'm now going to turn it over. I understand there are a couple of representatives from the short term rental industry, from the Hocking Lodging Association that would like to speak and they're going to speak on behalf of everyone. So at this time, I'll turn it over to that.
I guess this time I get to hold the microphone. Hello, my name is Todd Handy. I own SDRs and I'm a local. My family and I have owned land here for three generations and I moved here full time six years ago. I want to stress, not only do I own SDRs, but this is my community too. When I came here six years ago and looking to do business here in that Hocking County area, I was amazed at the lack of regulations and really amazed at the lack of enforcement. I met person after person who encouraged me not to pull a permit, not to pay taxes, filled me in on ways to get around state regulations. And to this day, I know of people that openly advertise their rentals and never paid a dollar in bed tax, don't use licensed contractors and never pulled a permit, and some of them own more than one rental. And now after 40 years of the STR business being the wild west here in Hocking County, it is certainly past time for some regulations. However, you're not going to make up for 40 years of zero oversight in two months. With vaguely worded regulations, many dangerous areas not even addressed at all, and thinking that a variance will gloss over a badly written rule. First, I have to ask you, what's the hurry? I mean, why is this being pushed through so fast? Is it because the state will be voting on it after the first of the year and you don't want to have, if these are not pushed through at the county level, then you'll have to acquiesce to the state's language? This committee will basically lose its ability to pass these regulations, is that's what's happening? Second, the way these ordinances are written currently, will it best have inspectors in the county tied up for years with hearings and variances and other minutiae? Because of the vague wording, everyone in here will be getting a variance on several of the same things because they aren't fleshed out or done or worded for reporting. And at worst, many of us in here will be suing due to the indecipherable language, ambiguity and impossible regulations from these regulations. Third, who will be paying for this? There will literally have to be an entire department who does nothing but inspect properties, hear variances, rule and then re-inspect. A $50 fee is going to cover this? With a conservative estimate of approximately 1,800 short term rentals in this county alone, one inspector working at top speed with no days off, one hour per day of drive time and two hours per inspection to get through electric, inside, outside signage, driveway shrubs, bed width, agent info, background info, bridges, decks, posted rental agreements. They would get this done in about two and a half years. Not including variances, re-inspections, bad weather, sick days. And then there are the variances themselves, the hearings, rulings, et cetera. Who's going to pay for this, seriously? Why aren't the owners in this committee working together? Most of us live here, but we have the same goal. A good, safe, professional rental environment that keeps our guests safe. When we started building our rentals six years ago, there was little oversight. Yet we didn't need to be told to put owner contact in each rental or the need for somebody to answer the phone 24/7 or what kind of signage to use so that fire and sheriffs and EMS departments can determine which rental is which. I want to promise you, there's nothing that you've thought of to keep my guests safe that we not only haven't already thought of, but have already implemented. I want my guests returning holiday after holiday. I want them safe and I damn sure don't want to be sued. Also, there are many areas that this committee hasn't even addressed and they're some of the most dangerous of all. Am I missing an area of pool and hot feet? Saunas, fire pits, indoor, outdoor flames? For example, how many hot tubs are cleaned by housekeepers? Many people think just draining the water between guests will keep a hot tub clean. It will not. How many people are trained to test and add proper chemicals? This is exactly why the committee needs to have short term rental professionals on the panel, advising the committee or at least able to offer their opinions. And I'm not talking about a two hour town forum where people are limited to a three minute clip. There needs to be an actual forum where county officials and a panel of short term rental professionals can talk about what works and what doesn't. Apparently some of you own short term rentals and that's great. But until this is what you do full time for a living, I will bet you could learn some things from those of us who do. And that is important because instead of wasting our time on creating an ordinance that makes perfect sense to you, only to have an STR owner hear it and start asking questions that this committee never thought of. For example, the wording on beds. To my knowledge, this has been changed twice already because the wording isn't practical. Now we're on the third iteration, but did you take into account trundle beds? Platform beds, Murphy beds, futons, day beds, loft beds? Let's stop hundreds of hearings and requests for variances before they even start by getting short term rental owner input. This will save everyone time and money. We should all be working together and this would be a great place to start. Fifth, I mentioned earlier that many of us know people here that don't pay bed tax, don't pull permits and don't build safely. Unfortunately, there's an attitude in this county that you don't have to do the right thing if your name is, fill in the blank. Here's a builder in town, or there is a builder in town who builds one cabin after another without ever fully pulling permits. He builds them all for personal use, then decides he doesn't want them and rents them out while he has them for sale. If you try to find a licensed plumber, you will find about the first 10 on the list that you come to don't have a license at all, but they're working under a license of a plumber that hasn't done work in this county for decades. Most of these guys can barely crack packs together. They didn't apprentice under him, they just pay him a fee to use his license. Some of these are even on a recommended list. None of these guys are licensed plumbers, but they're all holding down jobs and doing a thriving business in town. I say all of this to say that I don't think any of us here mind following a fair set of regulations. However, we would all like to see everyone follow the same regulations and that they be enforced fairly and equally. Will I be inspected the month after these pass? But Joe Bob on the end of the list won't get inspected for two years? Will Joe Bob ever get inspected or is it just going to be signed off on? Will all of Joe Bob's issues be grandfathered? All of his variances passed? Now I know everyone here understands the value of tourism, nobody's stupid. You may not love tourism, but I think it has been explained and discussed ad nauseam that tourism is pretty much the only thing this county has going for economically at the moment. In the past meeting, everyone got to see Finn's PowerPoint explaining how short term rentals bring in $270.4 million annually to this county. You also got to see how he predicted 20% of those short term rentals would close with these ordinances enacted. And Airbnb suggests another 30% of their listings would disappear. This county can't afford $135 million drop in revenue. In fact, most of us STR owners feel like we have a target on our backs between the recent property tax hikes and now the new permitting. I think everyone knows there's a massive shortfall in dollars to EMS and to emergency services. Since this county is told by the state how to allocate the tax, we have a massive problem because the state's formula was not written for tourist areas and it doesn't work for tourist areas. Our county's normal population is 27 and a half thousand people, but it swells to 7 million visitors a year. There's no way the state's allocation will work. Our real problem is twofold. The state's allocation needs to reflect the needs of the county driven by tourism. This is the primary issue and a very serious one. You can tax all of us to death, but in the end, the EMS, fire and sheriffs will still have a shortfall and the school system and other areas will have a massive windfall. Fix the actual problem, please. Get a proper allocation of our tax dollars instead of trying to raise taxes. Next, half of our tax dollars go to a private entity that has no oversight. My wife and I have lived in tourist areas for four decades and not once have we seen an area where public funds have no transparency on how they're spent. That's the next two problems. Why is a private entity entitled to the same tax dollars as the townships? That's absurd. No wonder our roads are awful, snow removal is spotty. EMS and sheriff's offices are undersized, undertrained and under-equipped, but we have amazingly well-funded tourism centers staffed by volunteers that put out a visitor's guide that is more than funded by its advertisers. Next, the absolute lack of transparency and oversight means the funds used to promote the Hocking Hills are spent god knows where and how, while the townships suffer. This needs to be seriously addressed. We can double the bed tax, but that just means that the amount currently spent to promote the area will double instead of being spent in areas with far more needs. In 2024, Hocking County lodging tax generated over $5.9 million. 2.9 million went to the townships and 2.9 million dollars went to HHTA. If we're able to see how HHTA spends these funds, maybe we'd be looking at a different tax allocation altogether, but we aren't. All we know is that the townships are in serious need of money and half of our checks we write every month for bed tax seem to be going to a group with zero oversight. In closing, I would like to reiterate, all of us here share the same goals. We want what is good for our county and good for our guests. We want what is good for our county. We should all be working together to accomplish this. Clearly getting a reallocation of county funds should be the first priority. And then getting a reallocation of the bed funds would be the next. And finally, short term rental owners and this committee working together to come up with good, well thought out, fair regulations that are aimed at the safety of the guests should be our next goal. Not trying to rush something through. I spoke at the last meeting about how there are several large corporations just waiting to purchase large properties as they come up for sale. By proposing inadequate and poorly worded regulations and ramrobbing them through, you will cause many in this room to go out of business, many to sell to these corporations and the Hocking Hills as we know it will no longer exist. Please do the right thing. I do want to take a second and thank Gabe Stockton for the innumerable hours he has spent at the expense of his family, working behind the scenes on this, some of it with people who have not been particularly kind or helpful. Gabe, we appreciate your efforts more than you know. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Warbat. My family and I have called Hocking Hills our home since 2017. And my wife Ming and I own a small family-run bed and breakfast called Wildcat Cottage here in Hocking County. I work full time as a facilities technician for George Eagle Company. We're absolutely not rich. As a family, we do our best to live within our means. No fancy cars, no big house, no extravagant vacations. Christmases and birthdays are modest, but we make do and we're grateful for what we have. When we started Wildcat Cottage, we had hoped it might allow for a few little extras in life. But the truth is, it mostly sustains itself. It helps support our church, contributes to our community and occasionally gives our family and friends a peaceful weekend away. To say that we do it for the money would be laughable. We do it because we love what we've built together as a family and we hope it can one day grow into something that will be a blessing to everyone it touches. Now let's be honest about something. Hocking Hills is what it is because God created this place undeniably special. The caves, the trails, the waterfalls, the indescribable beauty that draws people here year after year from around the world. Tourism isn't a passing trend, it's the foundation of this county's economy. It always has been and it always will be. So the real question isn't whether tourism continues, it's who will represent it? Will it be small, caring, family-run businesses rooted in the community or large distant corporations who can afford lawyers and lobbyists to absorb whatever new costs and regulations come their way? And honestly, this isn't about dividing locals from outsiders or B&amp;B operators from residents. There are many well-meaning ethical business owners who may not live in the county full time, but who love this area, respect its people and operate responsibly. We're all on the same side. None of us, large nor small, are in favor of irresponsible short term rentals that are low quality, unsafe or a nuisance to the neighbors and first responders. Short term rentals should be a blessing, not a burden. They should enhance the community, not disrupt it. And that's what most of us are trying to do. Run good, clean, safe, welcoming places that bring people here to experience the beauty God spoke into this region. But if weaponized, selectively targeted taxes, fees and cost compliance keep increasing, it's not the large, unfair and corporate operators that will disappear, it's the small, responsible, family-run businesses who can't afford to keep up. And you can add our names to that very long list. And you can add our names to that very long list. And local ownership, and once local ownership fades, we all lose. The community, the culture, and even the local economy that depends upon tourism. And finally, I want to sound a warning. Be careful about giving any government more power over private property just because it seems to serve your short-term interests. Once those powers are granted, they rarely go away. Today, it's short-term rentals. Tomorrow, it can be something that affects your land, your business, your home. This sets a dangerous precedent. History has shown governments rarely give power back once they've taken it. We all want what's best for Hocking County, to protect its natural beauty, its people, and its prosperity. Let's make sure we do it in a way that keeps opportunity open, supports reasonable businesses, and preserves the spirit of this community for generations to come. Thank you. I'm glad it's okay to use notes, because the older I get, the more I need them. So thanks, you guys, for using your notes, too. For those of you that I haven't had the chance to meet yet, I'm Joe Savarys. I'm the president of the Ohio Hotel and Lodging Association and our Unique Lodging of Ohio arm that specifically has membership from unique-type properties, including many short-term rental hosts, cabin owners, B&amp;B owners, and people in the sector that are affected by what we're talking about today. Short-term rentals, and more specifically broadly, what we call unique lodging properties, are an important and growing part of our industry across the entire state. For this reason, that's why we have that arm, ULO, that is focused on these types of issues every day, and that's why we're committed to working with you and with our officials on the best outcome that's possible, because I think we all want to see that. And for many years, our organization has worked to support efforts for what we have said consistently is reasonable oversight of short-term rentals and the lodging industry as a whole, reasonable oversight. I haven't talked to a member of mine in this segment of our industry that's ever been against that. We advocate for provisions which address the legitimate needs that need to be addressed while ensuring that the industry that generates, and I use the state number, $57 billion with a B, is not throttled or threatened or hindered. Travel economy, I always argue, should be thought of on par with other sectors, like manufacturing, or tech, or healthcare, and all the support in other communities that is thrown at them. As we heard today and we hear at every one of these meetings in this part of the state, this is it. We urge the local officials to work with us and with all of you to help these businesses and their employees as we produce great outcomes for this community. By the way, I'm not from Columbus. I'm from all the way over in Fairfield County. So this is an easy drive. So I do want to say and acknowledge that the process to date has produced some helpful starting points and suggestions and input, and I appreciate all that from the public officials. There's definitely been a lot of hard work that's going into this, and I've heard from so many of you who have shared some really great input with me. And that's what we're trying to do is aggregate that and help process that and have the dialogue with the public officials to produce the best possible outcome. What we bring to the table is many years of experience, looking at these regulations not only in Ohio but around the country, because I have a network of counterparts that I work with in every single state, every province of Canada, and this is not the first time that this has come up in a community like this, in a community of this size. There are a number of specific items that we would like to provide input on, and we did provide, the public officials, the commissioners, and the planning office, a detailed list of these prior to this meeting, which, being the last speaker and being great at clearing out a room, I'm not going to go through that entire list with you. But grab me on the way out and grab my business card and send me an email, and I'll email you this list, so everybody here gets to see it as well, or get it from Gabe, because Gabe's not getting enough phone calls and texts already. So he texted me last night at like 11:30. He said, "I'm still up if you want to talk." So what are some of the overarching ideas that we've shared with the officials working? The overarching ideas are the importance of not creating an unnecessary layer of regulation with potentially costly outcomes for business owners and operators. I make no bones or apologies for representing a business organization, your businesses. Let me go through, and then I'll gladly... I was invited here to speak today. Do you have a simple question? What you can... I didn't understand what the question was there, but thank you for your statement.
The question is, you're arguing a ruling, this whole situation, by bringing in all these people, building, making all the Hocking taxes go up.
We're not all rich.
Some of my members pay me in eggs and jam. Thank you for your comment. I appreciate the input, but that's part of what we're getting to. Part of the difference is... Well, one of the points that we shared and that we want to make and continue to talk about, and I think there's a lot more talking that we can do about this, is the need for fairness. Fairness between how short-term rental properties and these businesses are treated and how other businesses are treated or other properties are treated. But one of the overarching things that we shared and I put in writing with a list of more than 20 things related to the ordinance is understanding the real-world operational impacts that you all continue to share of some of these things that we're talking about. I have a couple of specific examples. I won't go through 20 of those, but there's a difference between concepts and templates and ideas from other places and the impact that that's going to have here. And it's important for us not to take steps which forfeit, as we've heard talked about today, the advantage that Hocking County has being a world-class, world-class destination. Some of our members have been recognized by media outlets from all over the world for having some of the best properties right here in Hocking County and in Hocking Hills. Not forfeiting that advantage that we have is important to us, too. So how did that relate to some of the specific concerns and some of the reasoning that we heard today? It's a concern because of limits on operations. For example, let's take one, banning sleeping accommodations in large parts of many rentals just because of how we define or don't define bedroom. It risks the very viability of some of these businesses with potentially possibly no impact at all on health and safety. An example of that is if I have a sofa bed in what would commonly be referred to as a living room or a common area, it might have greater means of in-dress and e-dress than a loft, but if it's not defined as a bedroom, you can't have people sleeping. It's not about health and safety. Also point out that I'm not really convinced of the impact on health and safety of limiting the age of tenants either. So I don't know that magically you're conferred with some sort of responsibility when it comes to drinking when you reach age 21. I know plenty of irresponsible 25, 35, and 45-year-olds when they get into a cognitive environment and start drinking. So I don't know that that has a direct impact on health and safety. 18, 19, and 20-year-olds can vote. Many times, they hold jobs and they pay taxes, and they can serve in this country and serve their country in the military. I had lots of friends that were 18, 19, and 20 years old who went to Afghanistan and Iraq, and I'll put it to you on it that every one of them was a responsible citizen. So it's okay to send them there, but they can't rent a cabin in Hocking County. But creating a potentially redundant and especially conflicting regulations with existing building codes just may be unnecessary, and that's one reason, as we said, what's the rush? We do want to help take a deeper look at this to say, we think so much of the good things that you want to accomplish can be accomplished with referencing what are existing building codes and paying attention to what existing compliance is as well. And similarly, grandfathering, the concept of grandfathering, STR lodging businesses for new requirements, would protect this part of the county's economy without a negative impact necessarily on health and safety. It's a basic principle in building codes and building regulations, and I just think we should have a little bit of time to take a look at that here as well. And some provisions just need a little more careful thought and examination that we, as the industry, can help you with. So there are several references to guests as tenants in this code, and I promise you that has legal implications that could end up signaling and conferring rights on those guests that they do not have, and that's a negative outcome. It won't be a positive outcome in terms of safety or law enforcement to start calling guest tenants. Transient hotel and accommodation guests in Ohio are not tenants, and they are not conferred tenant rights. You have to stay in a place for 30 days to be a tenant. So I think that's just the kind of industry detail that we can help work through to say there's an operational impact there that wasn't considered. So in addition to these 20 specific references to things that were in the code, we provide a sampling of some different approaches in different parts of the country. I confess, I only did that today. So these gentlemen and the people that work with them have not had a lot of time to look at that, but they will. They've seen a lot of examples from around the country. I know that, but there's always more that we can look at. This is not the first time that these types of issues have been addressed in local communities. There is no perfect piece of legislation out there at any level, but there's certainly a lot of things that we can look at to broaden our ideas. And with the goal, as we've seen in some of the communities that I shared today earlier by email, those were communities that had the goal of protecting the community, benefiting residents, but also benefiting the businesses and visitors equally. Not giving them an advantage, but benefiting everybody equally, which is what we're hoping for. And to that end, my last thought is that we were really glad to hear last week about the county's goal to ensure a win-win approach. So I'm going to call you out on it, because you said win-win to me, and I said to you, I like the idea of win-win, and I think win-win is the right way to think about it. It's not one side or the other. And with that, win-win is a way I would like to think about this going forward. It's enlightened, it's productive, it's a way that we can support the travel economy and make sure that we're addressing needs within the community. We can help boost our jobs, spending, taxes, quality of life, investment that this all produces, these are all good things. So for these reasons, there are some things that we proposed in the spirit of win-win. And these are kind of new ideas that were not part of the original ordinance, but I suggested last week, would we maybe have an opportunity to think outside the box? What do I mean by win-win? In the purpose of this ordinance, it talks about health and safety. Can we make it clear in the purpose that it's also to support short-term rental businesses, their owners, and the economic activity that they produce, which benefits the entire county? And we allude to that, that there's an importance to this industry and what it contributes. We also propose establishing a committee or working group of officials, industry, and other partners to continually monitor the impact of the regulations, but also to look for additional opportunities beyond this discussion based on health and safety and other requirements that are in the ordinance, broaden the discussion, talk about efforts to support and expand economic activity in the county. And we think that, and we think about how we get behind this. We also call for an annual and expanded countywide economic impact report with direct involvement of the county officials and offices and industry. And we suggest a one-point-of-contact approach within county government to truly assist and help and foster a healthy, short-term lodging business environment. So when we're navigating new rules and new regulations in all these departments, we know where to go to, and we have somebody charged with connecting us with the right people and getting us the answers we need. We talked about lodging tax and how some of that money is invested. So I'm talking. Borrowing from a model that we participate in in other parts of this state, we propose dedicating a limited portion, a percentage, of the lodging tax dollars generated by these businesses impacted by this regulation to directly support those businesses and the economic activity that they produce. But that money would be dedicated to a fund that is controlled by those businesses, and the decisions are made by them on how they spend that money. And we do this in another part of the state where we have an agreement with the county and participation of the convention, the Visitors Bureau, but it's the hotels and lodging businesses that control that. And in this county, it's the short-term rental businesses that are producing almost all of the lodging tax. And I think they should have a say. What happens with that? How do we spend it? And what we do with that? We have a successful model to show how we can do that. That sounds like a... Well, I'm sorry. I worked at the State House for eight years. My second-to-last point is, can we think about working together in a bigger way and formalize an agreement in a way to do this, where we work with the county and other partners and job and workforce development to grow the county's workforce for this critical sector? We provide residents of this county more opportunities for skills training and prosperity and entrepreneurs? Can we think about this beyond just the health and safety aspects that we're talking about? And finally, related to health and safety, I think, and some of the first responder and law enforcement comments, I suggest that win-win should offer benefits for guests as well as residents, and that reports of harassment, threats, or intimidation directed at patrons and guests of short-term rental businesses shall be investigated by law enforcement authorities to determine the potential applicability and codes and statutes regarding assault, criminal menacing, or other relevant offenses. And that we should put that right and protection in the aforementioned guest conduct and notice so that the guests know that, that they have recourse, because I've received many reports from my members about the what about when guests are harassed? So I think with all these ideas, and this is a summary of what I provided to the commissioners and planning office and will provide to all of you, isn't it clear that there's much more opportunity to look for ways that we can work together and come up with positive solutions? We can produce better results and greater benefits, and also ensuring that we address any personal needs that are out there. I don't hear people disagreeing about the need to get apparatus into properties and that we need to have appropriate and reasonable signs. I don't hear people saying that that's a problem. I, I don't hear people saying that that's a problem. I think they're worried about the decisions that end up putting them out of business because they can't write. So, I hope that everybody involved will take advantage of this opportunity. I said last week, you know, it really is a heartening thing to come to meetings like this, as messy as they can be, the emotions that can be part of that, we sure saw some of that last week. But thank God we're in a place where we can do that. There's lots of places where we don't get this opportunity. I thank you for listening to us, you know, I, I believe that you're interested in producing good outcomes. It's all about the how, how do we get there? We're committed to helping do that. HHLA is committed to doing that. Everybody here, I think, wants to see that. So, take advantage of what's going forward, but give us the opportunity to come to that table and dig into some of these issues. Thanks.
Thank you all for participating, thanks for input, and I, and I can confidently say, all three speakers, very good information, very helpful, very reasonable, and you're right. I did try to read through all of your today, but today didn't happen. So, it'll take a while, especially all those links you sent for other municipalities or other areas. So, we, we are going to wrap up at this point. Let me make one response to a request that you made because Gabe was my best friend for, I think, for twenty-four hours three weeks ago. And then, for some reason, he doesn't like me anymore. He sends me messages all hours of the day and night and day and night. But it would really help us, this group and, and others who are here that aren't sitting at the table, if your group had a single point of contact. Because one of our big challenges, I alluded to after the meeting, lots of good feedback in the meeting and lots of emails after the meeting, but it was all over the place. We, we don't know what to focus on because there are so many different concerns. And, and you can, each of you can stand and speak for your specific interest. I, I think this group who spoke tonight did a good job speaking across the board. But it would help, and, and I've asked Gabe thirty-seven times to have a, a single point. In fact, I talked to a friend at the break. It would be good if you all could funnel your comments and come up with a list of priorities of what you think is most important as it relates to regulations, and then we can focus on those in order of priority. Because it's, it, it is difficult when somebody says, I mean, and, and I'll be honest, there's a lot of people who say, "We don't really care about those big cabin owners from out of town. We care about the local guys, us, the local owners." Well, we can't differentiate. So, it, it would be helpful if, if you spoke with one or two voices so that we can do what you requested. And it's a great request, I think, to sit down and continue a conversation for everybody's win-win solution. I think we can get there, but we can't do it in a forum like this. It has to be that this group says, "These are our important issues, let's resolve those." And, and, and I can tell you, we are committed to that resolution. We are committed to a win-win. We want you to win, we want your guests to win, I use the right term. We want the county to win, we want the townships to win. We want it to be a win-win, and we're committed to doing that. So, thank you all for coming. We'll look forward to hearing back from whoever is the spokesperson for the group. Thank you all very much. Yeah, there hasn't been any questions. So, you can ask a question after we're done. We are dismissed. You're welcome to come up and have a conversation. Wait, I'm not going to let him answer. We didn't give him a completion date.
Yeah, there's, there's... There is no, there's no hard completion date. I'm willing to, to stay on an advisory capacity. I mean, that's the best I can, I can give you at this point. So, there is no, I think the bigger question is, is there going to be a date where? I think your bigger concern is, you know, is this going to be voted on on a certain date? I could tell you, that's not going to happen until the county commissioners are comfortable with moving forward. No, I, I will say this before we close. I think that is a misnomer. I don't believe that has been our intention before on this. I mean, Audi intentionally goes through the list of, of how long this has taken for the process, and it has been quite a process, and I know Audi's committed to, to not resolving it until we feel like we have a good resolution. So, yes, I, I, I think I speak for everyone up here that we, we don't feel like we're rushing through this. We're still taking an input and, and are, are very open about that.
One other quick comment in terms, and, and we've heard this consistently, and I, I, we are committed, I, I personally am committed to improve communication. And I know there's some people who feel like, "Well, we don't know about it until we go into a meeting." Well, we're going to figure out a venue, a tool that we can use that you can see what's going on. We invite you to attend the meetings on the last Thursday of the month. If you're not able to, I, I'm making a personal commitment that we'll find, whether it's on your site or the county commissioner's site, so that you can see the changes that we're recommending. We are finished. Have a great night. Thanks all for attending.